Oh, uh, can I give you your agenda?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. It is 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Mancer, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier and Commissioner Carolina Mejia. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Emily Klaus. We have our County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Wobbe. First up this afternoon is to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Mejia, if you please join us.
Please show me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Land acknowledgement.
We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish people whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squaxon Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt the ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Yes, sir. Um, we have a proposed agenda. Are there, um, is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the proposed agenda. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda's approved. This is opportunity for the public to address the board. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public at, um, uh, board meetings. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. General speaking guidelines include, uh, introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address the board, not audience or staff. Please silence your cell phones. The board does not specifically respond to public comment, but on an as-needed basis, County Manager may follow up with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the board. They may not donate, uh, any of that time to other speakers. Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the board for good cause. No comments that allude offensive, inflammatory, hateful, discriminatory, or defamatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually become before the board on appeal. All written materials provided to the county will be considered public records and subject to release upon request pursuant to Chapter 4256 of the RCW Public Records Act. We have a sign-up, and we'll go through that, and then we'll have anyone on Zoom that would like to provide testimony. First up is Linnea Comstock with John Pettit on deck.
Can you, is it?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Uh, my name is Linnea Comstock. I live in Olympia, Washington, in the city itself. And as I reviewed with you last time, there was a Thurston County Board of Commissioner meeting, uh, just to catch us back up on the facts. On January 3rd, you collectively via Chairwoman Mejia went to the Board of Natural Resources to ask them to halt two timber sales, cabbage patch and carrot. And on February 6th, the Board of Natural Resources voted to pause those two timber sales. And on March 5th, the Board of Natural Resources sent you a letter, and, uh, which I am including today in the public record, I'll be turning it into, uh, the clerk, um, requiring you to have a plan by October 1st of 2024 to make the junior taxing districts whole that have been impacted by the cabbage patch and carrot pauses. And so I'm going to read the last paragraph of that letter. In developing your plan, it is important to us, the Board of Natural Resources is us, consistent with our fiduciary responsibilities as trust managers, that it makes trust beneficiaries, who are the junior taxing districts, that's my insertion there, whole monetarily. This includes the trusts for the state's common schools, universities, and other institutions, as well as the local taxing districts for schools, libraries, fire districts, and other beneficiaries. We encourage you to include representatives from the junior taxing districts as you develop your plan. So one question I would have for you is, what plans have you made to include the junior taxing districts? Secondly, I have a, uh, a letter that the Olympia School Board Superintendent Patrick Murphy wrote to the Board of Natural Resources. The line was so long on the July 2nd Board of Natural Resource meeting for comments that they had to cut people off at one hour. I wasn't able to comment. I know he wasn't able to comment. So he sent me a letter that he, he sent to the Board of Natural Resources, and I'm going to include it in the public record for you all to review because the decisions that you're making on behalf of, of whatever interest it is you've got in the tree situation, the legacy forest mature tree situation, is impacting people, and I, I don't know if you, you don't care or you just didn't think it through, but this letter is included here. Is it coming up on mine? No. Okay. So the, uh, in this letter, he talks about the impacts on the Olympia School District and the financial difficulties having, they're having. So if you think about the two schools that they were going to close, one of them is Madison Elementary, which is downtown, and that's where they have the homeless, um, the homeless program for kids. And a lot of difficult, uh, difficulties in that population exist in that school. And that five, $600,000 that's going to be, that's been held, uh, from the Olympia School District by the Board of Natural Resources is going to contribute to their deficit. So it's 596, 128, but anyway. So I'm going to include that letter so you can, can review it as well. And I, I've encouraged him to get in contact with you and to come to this meeting, other school board, and I will continue to do so, the junior taxing districts, whoever I can to let you know that the decisions that you make impact them. And I don't, I don't understand how it is, how it is you came to not include them. Um, but anyway, I am telling you as a taxpayer or asking you, I'm holding you to account to come up with this plan without raising taxes. The DNR logging of, of mature forests, from what I've read scientifically, and I haven't done a deep dive on that, I'm a clinician, a doctorate-level clinician in, uh, physical therapy, so I don't have a technical background in forestry, although I do know how to research, do research reviews in PubMed, et cetera. Um, so I'll be trying to find the scientific sources for that, but that's what I've heard is, is actually that younger forests and younger trees are better at carbon sequestration than mature forests. So I'd like you to ask that you keep your constituents, all of your constituents, including those homeless kids at Madison, in mind when you act, not solely in the, for the environmental, uh, for your environmental lawsuit partners that you have in your lawsuit against the Department of Natural Resources. Thank you.
John Pettit, followed by Josefine Magana.
I think they've got a copy, right? Best of public, yes. To the Board of Natural Resources. It's not that Thursday can't afford that. I don't want them to make it. Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's glad to see you're back after a vacation of having the opportunity for the public to speak. Uh, I have several particular items. First thing I'm going to address is a little bit about the timber issue. I don't think that perhaps you recognize that what you're looking at there isn't just trees. What you're looking at is crop, a crop. The people spoke before. The state of Washington people have spoke before. That is their garden that they're harvesting for the benefit of providing money and resources to these organizations. Apparently, perhaps you think that you should, your small group should overspeak the entire population of the state of Washington because you have some, perhaps some environmentalist friends that doesn't want to cut down a tree? The tree is a crop. We have a gar, I have a garden. We harvest the garden. We eat the food. That's why we grow a garden. Those are not virgin timber. We have lots of good virgin timber out there. We have national parks that has all that. But coveting, coveting, somebody else's property, and in this case, it's the, the funds for the schools and everything saying, because I'm suddenly a, I'm an expert now on trees, I've been elected, and so I'm an expert, is inappropriate and wrong. You need to follow the law. Now, as a follow-up to, uh, a couple other items that I'm going to have here is that the respect of the law. Now, respect of the law, you may be aware, I wrote you a letter, that I'm very concerned because we have a couple members on the board here that have chose to, uh, be involved with what would be a forgery of the, uh, documents that we have in the public records. It's a crime. It's a felony. And because of that, I have sought that we have to have prosecution, and if we don't get it from our local level, then we'll elevate it to the FBI. Now, I'm following that up with a extra comment here is, the county has a public information system, an officer. I'm thinking it should be labeled public propaganda, propaganda system. You have to give both the good and the bad news if you're going to be accurate about things to people. You can't just butter people up, oh, we're doing so great, look at us. You're not in kindergarten, you're not in high school. The fact of the matter is, you have to be honest. In regards to changing a resolution, the idea that you could take a document, change the words, change the documents, why don't you just go ahead and change perhaps the Constitution of the United States? Write your own version and put, substitute it. Or the Pledge of Allegiance. You don't have a right to do that. That is the very essence of, uh, concern about people violating democracy. I've, I wrote you a letter, I'll leave it at that about what my letter content is, because you, you know what it is, and you know which one of you Commissioners have been directly involved in this. It's not going away. It's been two years since I reported it to you previously. Let's get the public information officer to expose all of this, make it true, and let the public know what the truth is. They're entitled to it. They pay your wages, and they pay all your staff wages. So each one of you costs the county about 140,000 personally a year. So I'm just going to ask, please start being honest, don't use it as a propaganda. Thank you.
Josefine Magana, and that's it for the written sign-up, because Jesse said no. So we'll go to, uh, Zoom folks after Ms. Magana.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy Tuesday. Uh, my name is Josefine. I am the Director of Thurston Thrives, a collective impact organization mobilizing the community to close health equity gaps through focused initiatives, impactful actions, support, and education. Uh, we are an initiative of the Thurston Chamber Foundation. I am here to talk about the importance of Black, Indigenous, and people of color mental health. The U.S. House of Representatives designed Designated July as Bebe Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. This happened in 2008. Inspired by Campbell's Charge to End Stigma and Support Minorized Communities Around Mental Health. So to honor this topic, Thurston Thrives is partnering with NAMI Thurston Mason, and we are hosting a panel entitled "Shifting the Mental Health Culture Through Conversations", and it is going to happen on July 23rd, uh, 2024, from 9:00 to 11:00 via Zoom. Uh, who needs to attend and can attend? Community members, minority BIPOC communities, mental health professionals, community leaders, and stakeholders. Uh, and why is this important, and why are we bringing it to your attention? There are mental health disparities. BIPOC individuals in Thurston County face significant mental health disparities. Nationally, only 31% of Black and Hispanic adults, uh, with mental health conditions receive services, uh, compared to 48 of white adults. Local barriers include lack of insurance, stigma, and language barriers. Uh, socioeconomic impacts. Economic challenges greatly impact mental health. Uh, for instance, 16.7% of Hispanic individuals live in poverty compared to 12.6% of the general population. Poverty increases the risk of mental health issues, creating a cycle that is hard to break. Uh, cultural differences in language barriers lead to misdiagnosis and inadequate treatment. Uh, more culturally competent care and diverse mental health providers are needed. Addressing these disparities requires awareness, improved access to care, and cultural competence among providers. Let's prioritize mental health in our community efforts. Thank you for your attention, and I hope to see you at the virtual panel on July 23rd. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the room that didn't get a chance to sign up that wished to provide public testimony? Seeing none, we'll go to the Zoom folks. I'll read the ones I can read, and I might need help from, uh, staff if I can't. The first one is Susan Yocum.
My name's Susan Yocum. I live in the Steambody Island Peninsula of unincorporated Thurston County, and I've been participating with your Zooms for many years now, and I always have the same topic, fireworks. You guys don't seem to do anything, nothing, squat, diddly. The emergency burn ban, uh, the emergency discharge ban that was, um, signed by Josh in 2016, that's eight years ago. There are no consequences, no plans, no regulations. All it says is, please don't shoot off the fireworks. Well, that doesn't work. You guys really need to get off the dime and start doing something with the fireworks situation. Um, Commissioner Mancer, earlier, and when you guys opened the meeting, you made a proclamation about the, the tribes and their situations and thanking them, uh, for carrying to the land into fortuity. Well, if the fireworks don't get under control, there will be no land left here. All you'll have is burnt toothpicks and polluted water. The Puget Sound is supposed to be federally, federally protected. It's an orca habitat, and you guys aren't, they're just not being protected. It's just not. Did you know that in King County for the Fourth of July, and I only have this information from one site, but one is better than none, in a professional show into Lake Union, so that's not the sound, but nonetheless, they discharged 7,000, three zeros, 7,000 pounds of explosives? What? And that's not even counting any other place. So you guys should have some concept of how many explosives, how much is going into our water? And I don't think that you know. You know, the, there is a red flag warning when we had the burn ban, or, um, I think DNR called the red flag ban before the Fourth of July. Nobody cares. All the people want to do is blow up their mortars that they take illegally off the reservation and into the neighborhood. And it's got to stop, please. Can't you guys, now there's five of you, so hopefully there's more ideas. You got, I've given you numerous hundreds of ideas on how this situation can be addressed. Uh, but again, you, you recognize the tribes, and I would like the tribes to recognize you, recognize me, provide, you have to start some conversation about the inherent danger to the environment, to the air. We had air pollution banned for four days down here because of the fireworks on the forest. All that smoke and everything hung out for four days due to the weather, due to the red flag. Do you care about the people that don't have air conditioning? No. Do you care about the people that have autistic children that might be totally terrified of fireworks? No. Is there any place, any place that we as homeowners can go for any safety? No, not until it's too late. And that needs to change. One of the things, documents I submitted was, um, comments from the Next Door Neighborhood website, and this is just people asking for a little cooperation, respect, compassion, any of it. And what, they don't get any of it. I really hope you look at these Next Door comments, because people are saying, what do you mean there's a ban? There's three fireworks stations, sales place set up right around the corner from my house. Ban? What ban? You guys really need to start taking this serious. I know I've been trying to ride your butts about it for a long time, and I'm getting I mean, you're, it's so frustrating, it's so dangerous and unnecessary. Even, even in the docket process in, in February, you guys didn't really, I don't think you gave it a fair shake. The number of comments that were submitted and the way they were summarized on who was in favor and who wasn't, I reviewed those comments too. I had 43 comments, or with three negative comments. That was it. That's not what you guys reported. Um, and do you know that the people, so frustrating, that you're...
Yocum, you have, you have to wrap up.
Your process of notifying people, it's all patchwork. You're man, the whole county is patchwork for, against, there's a ban here and not across the street. And it just goes on and on. So I just encourage you to talk with the tribes calm, productively. You need a multi-jurisdictional, multi-cross-agency work group on this, and the tribe should be included. There are tribal liaisons. They're already...
You have to wrap up. Your, your four minutes are up.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And Commissioner, I have a call-in to, to you, uh, to get a scheduled conference, so hopefully somebody will start paying attention.
I think we have a meeting set for tomorrow, actually, so I'll talk to you then.
Okay, well, I haven't been informed of that yet, so.
Okay, well, I'll reach out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, I can't read the next name. Someone can. Susan Meyer? Would you like to provide testimony?
Hi, no, I'm just here, uh, as a visitor and just, uh, listening to the, uh, comments.
Thank you so much. Vivian Eason is next.
Sure.
Go ahead, Ms. Eason, you have four minutes.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm here to talk about the, um, the cabbage patch and carrot halt, and that is affecting, I live, sorry, it's Vivian Eason, I live in Rochester, Washington, and it is affecting, um, our school district out, it will affect our school district out here and our, um, and our, uh, fire district, not alone. It also affects Medic One, county roads, uh, the libraries, which we don't even have a library, on, uh, southwest, uh, Thurston County. And you know, we now have a county commissioner that is assigned to help South County, and I, I really haven't heard the stance on, um, what Commissioner Fornier thinks of this, the halt on the logging. I grew up in Washington State, I grew up in the Pacific Northwest, I've been in Washington State since 1975, and I know two of the county commissioners did not grow up here, so you may not have all the history of how timber has been such a part of the, um, functions of Washington State, where the Evergreen State, it is a logging industry, it's a logging towns, I, I went to high school in Shelton, and I ride the forest, I ride my horses, I watch the timber being logged. And when you're talking about legacy forests, there's no such thing as a legacy forest. If you Google it, it's only a, something that was created in Washington State by the, um, environmental groups. There is no such thing as a legacy forest. There's either old growth timber, or there's the replant timber, second growth, third growth, you're getting up into the fourth growth. I ride in areas up at Capitol Forest that have been logged, the trees are replanted, they grow back, um, out Fort Blakely land, Green Diamond, it's all the same thing. These are, um, tree forests, tree farms that are created to log. And it's a, an RCW, and it's a law that gives DNR the, the authority to run the trust for the Capitol Forest and for many of the other state forests. And I was told by, and I, I notice he's not on here, I think he's going to write a letter to, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Mancer is, I was speaking to, uh, State Representative Dan Griffey, and he said, you know why it's called Capitol Forest? And I said, no, and he goes, it was logged, it was clear-cut to pay for the, the building of the Capitol, and they pretty much built the Capitol with cash from the timber sales. So you know, that's why it's called Capitol Forest, it's not old growth up there. I, there, if it is, DNR protects a lot of the trees, that's their job. I've also responded to fires when I worked for emergency management, one of those I worked over in Ferry County, and I talked to the, um, like, national, the national forest people, and they said the environmental groups are what are causing the fires in the forest. They won't let us manage the trees. They replant too thick, there's no fire breaks. So you know, it's, it's this human interference that you, you've got experts that have done this for generations, and you've got our county commissioners that are elected by the taxpayers of Thurston County siding with environmental groups to effectively hurt the taxpayers of Thurston County. And so I'm really, um, appalled by the decision. My grandpa moved to the Pacific Northwest many, many years ago, he was a coal miner. He worked in the Roseburg, um, lumber mill down in Roseburg, it was Roseburg Lumber. And over the years, we had the environmental groups, first it was the spotted owl, then it was this and that, but you know, it's constantly something that you're trying to stop, the timber industry. And so when you do that, your homes are built with wood, so you're talking about affordable housing, you're talking about more homes. You need affordable, um, housing, you need wood. We, um, export a lot of timber at the port... We, um, export a lot of timber at the Port of Olympia. So you're also going to be hurting the longshoremen. You're hurting all the families that work in the timber industry. And I probably out of time, I see
Yeah, your time is up, ma'am.
Commissioner Fornier chopping at the bit to get me off.
Thank you. Uh, next up, I have Juan Carlos Martinez. Did I get that? Can't hardly read it.
Juan Carlos Ramirez Martinez.
Here's Martinez, sir. Did you want to give public comment? Mr. Martinez, you have four minutes if you'd like to give comment. No? Okay. Okay, uh, Chris Lester?
No comment, thank you.
Heath Haikla?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Heath Haikla with the American Forest Resource Council. Our Washington office is in Olympia, but I am not a resident of Thurston County. AFRC proudly represents forest products manufacturers, including many family-owned operations that produce the renewable, climate-friendly wood products our society needs right here in Washington under strict environmental regulations. I appreciate the opportunity to comment today. I wasn't planning to comment until I saw your discussion yesterday, but I felt it was important to respond to several statements and with two requests. First, it is simply not accurate to claim that no junior taxing districts have lost revenue due to the past actions of this commission. In fact, Juno would likely have been completed and revenue would already be flowing to schools and other junior taxing districts from Cabbage Patch and Carrot. Also, for the record, Juno was not sold, as was claimed yesterday. It was held back from auction due to the commission's actions. The fact is that DNR has not sold the timber sale in Thurston County since November of twenty twenty-three, nearly a year. Yes, that has in fact impacted schools and other junior taxing districts that are now facing budget shortfalls. These actions will delay timber relevant revenues well into the future and have also impacted sales that generate revenue to nearby Gray's Harbor County. You should also be aware that the fifteen million dollar Natural Climate Solutions Budget Proviso passed earlier this year. If it remains following the Climate Commitment Act repeal vote, specifically precludes setting aside parcels where DNR has initiated timber sale planning. That would include Juno, Cabbage Patch, Carrot and others. The funding provided, provided will likely target only about two hundred and fifty acres, far less than the thirty-one hundred acres identified by anti-forestry groups and Thurston County. Also, be aware, this program will not make beneficiaries whole, as was claimed by a commissioner yesterday. It will almost certainly result in a delay of three or more decades for beneficiaries to receive revenues as mature harvestable DNR parcels are set aside and swapped out for young plantation forests that are purchased and will likely take decades to reach a commercially harvestable age. It is also quite uncertain whether other counties would agree to have, having private timberlands purchased in their jurisdiction only to have the revenues flow back to Thurston County. My two requests, I understand that Thurston County is preparing a plan to send to the Board of Natural Resources following its October first deadline for addressing the current pause on harvest. I am submitting a public records request today in the hopes to receive this and related correspondence. I also hope to get an idea for the, the amount of court, uh, interactions you've had with the junior taxing districts. Finally, I do appreciate the comments yesterday about wanting to have balance and providing equal opportunity for groups to appear before the commission. I would note that the commission has heard from DNR several times and separately from anti-forestry groups in public session, but it has not given forestry groups the same opportunity. I hope you will consider extending an invitation to our industry to have a dialogue with you in public session. I think you would find it informative. You should also extend the same courtesy to the junior taxing districts your, your decisions are impacting. I will follow up in writing on these two requests and thank you for your time today.
Uh, I think everyone else is staff, Alicia Hughes also. Okay, so I think that's it for public comment.
Mr. Martinez unmuted again. I'm not sure if you
Martinez, did you have public comment to give? I couldn't understand. You were waving at me. Can you hear me, sir?
He doesn't, doesn't speak English.
Okay. Written testimony maybe, but you're better. Sure.
Uh, señor Martinez? Quisiera dar comentario?
No.
No?
No, no le entendí que como no, no hablo el inglés.
O, okay, eh, esta, eh, por qué está teniendo esta reunión?
Porque me agarraron, esté parqueado ahí a la auría del, de la carretera.
Okay, está en la reunión equivocada. Esta no es la corte.
Oh. Porque según hablé y fue donde me dijeron que me, te hiciera porque como no tengo alguien que me lleve prate para ir al corte y hablé hoy en la mañana y me dijeron que hablaras de
Si se tiene que comunicar con la, con la corte, esta no es la corte.
Oh. Okay.
It's a court, yeah.
Okay.
Si me podrá pasar información de la corte, ¿no?
One second, let me give him the court number.
Cuando saliste, me dijeron que me iban a dar información y todo y pues yo pensé que era el papel ese que me dieron y fue el número que marcé.
Uh, el número de, de la corte de distrito es, permítame. A tres sesenta, siete ocho seis, cinco cuatro cinco cero.
Me lo puedo repetir, por favor?
Tres seis cero, siete, si, siete ocho seis, cinco cuatro, cinco cero.
Cinco cero. Ah, sí, fue el que hablé y fue donde me dijeron que me registrara así en el página Zoom para poder, este, hablar en el corte.
Sí, estará en la reunión equivocada.
Okay, discúlpenme.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, uh, let's move to county manager's update.
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay. Um, we have a consent agenda items three A through three K. Is there any request to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion in second to approve items three A through three K. Non debatable motion and call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved. Next up is item four A, Public Health and Social Services. Vital Housing Courtside Apartments Funding Award Approval. Alex Purse from our Affordable Housing Program Manager to, uh, present to the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alex Purse, Affordable Housing Program Manager. I am here today to ask you to approve the funding recommendation from the Regional Housing Council to fund the Vital Housing Courtside Apartment Acquisition and Preservation Project to preserve and improve existing affordable housing for a total of one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifteen cents and authorize Public Health and Social Services to issue an award commitment letter. Vital Housing responded to Thurston County's request for proposals for affordable housing capital projects in April. The Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board reviewed and scored their application. The advisory board then discussed the project as well as other projects at its April twenty-fifth meeting. The advisory board recommended funding Vital Housing's Courtside Apartments Acquisition and Preservation Project contingent upon the agency providing additional information, which was identified and requested by the advisory board. Vital Housing responded with the information and documents requested and this information was then reviewed by the advisory board at their June twentieth meeting. They unanimously approved a motion to fund the Vital Housing Project at the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Staff then took this recommendation to the Regional Housing Council meeting on June twenty-sixth. The Regional Housing Council unanimously approved the advisory board's recommendation to fund the project and now recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to approve their recommendation. Vital Housing's proposal is to acquire and preserve a hundred and twelve units of affordable housing at Courtside Apartments in Olympia. The organization will update units to achieve more energy efficiency. The apartments are currently rent restricted due to a tax credit financing, which is set to expire in twenty twenty-six. So Vital Housing's acquisition of this property will preserve much-needed affordable units within Thurston County. Once the project is fully funded and has met all pre-contract requirements, the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention will come back to the board to request authorization to sign a contract for this award. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Alex? Nope, is there a motion?
I move to approve the funding recommendation from the Regional Housing Council to fund the Vital Housing Courtside Apartment Acquisition and Preservation Project to preserve and improve existing affordable housing for a total of one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifteen cents and authorize Public Health and Social Services to issue an award commitment letter.
Second.
Motion in second to approve this recommendation to fund, uh, the Vital Housing Courtside Apartment Acquisition Project. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Or B is also Public Health and Social Services Amendment Number Two of the Developmental Disabilities Administration County Program Agreement. Mark Moffitt to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mark Moffitt, Public Health and Social Services. Um, this amendment, number two, to the Development of Disabilities Administration, uh, Program Agreement, extends the original agreement, uh, to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five and increases the contract amount by seven million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars for a total amount of fifteen million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. These funds will be budgeted to local providers to, to assist people with developmental disabilities in, um, accessing employment and community inclusion services.
Questions for Mark?
I move to admit, approve amendment number two to the Development Disabilities Administration County Program Agreement number two, three, six, three, dash, four, eight, nine, three, three, extending the original agreement to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and increasing the contract amount by seven million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars for a revised maximum of fifteen million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and authorize the interim director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the agreement and future amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the amendment number two. Any discussion and motion? Of, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mark. And you've got item four C, which is professional services agreements for supported employment, high school transition, job foundation and community inclusion services.
Yes, Commissioner, this, these contracts will, uh, utilize the, uh, the funds from the previous agenda item to, uh, provide services that are vital for more than five hundred residents in Thurston and Mason Counties uh, to be included in employment and recreation activities. Uh, they will be distributed to the five employment agencies, the local, um, five, the five local employment agencies that are listed here, Career Quest, Center Force, Exceptional Foresters, Morningside and Vodis.
Questions for Mark on the item? Nope, is there a motion?
Move to approve Thurston, Mason County Developmental Disabilities Professional Services Agreement with Career Quest, Center Force, Exceptional Foresters, EFI, Morningside and Vodis for a combined total of seven million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars to provide supported employment, high school transition, job foundation and community inclusion services for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and to authorize the interim director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the agreements and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion in second to approve these professional services agreements. Any debate, or sorry, discussion of this motion? Nope. Okay, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is five A, Public Works Item. Contract Award for Green Cove Fish Barrier Removal Phase One Project CP six oh, six three oh two three. Marcus Dorvik, Senior Civil Engineer, to brief the board.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcus Dorvik, Public Works, Senior Civil Engineer. On June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, a total of six bids were received to construct the Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal Phase One Project, number six, three, oh, two, five, uh, two, three, sorry. Bids were received in response to advertisement in the Olympian and Daily Journal Commerce and was posted on the Builders Exchange of Washington website. The low responsive bid was received from Quig Brothers Incorporated of Aberdeen, Washington with a bid amount six million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-six dollars and ten cents. This project will replace a culvert at Country Club Road Northwest that previously failed. An emergency repair was performed in November, twenty twenty-one to maintain stream flow, protect the traveling public, roadway and utilities, and maintain emergency access for those residents. A new hundred fifty-foot post tension, uh, bridge will be installed that meets current fish passage requirements and maintains access for all road users. The estimated total project cost is approximately nine point six million dollars and there are a grand total of eight different funding sources, including a three point one million dollar federal protect grant, a two point five million dollar federal culvert AOP grant, a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar state Brian Abbott grant, a two hundred thirteen thousand dollars state Public Works Board loan, a five hundred thousand dollar cost reimbursable by the Thurston PUD utility, two point, uh, five million dollars in REIT two dollars, two hundred thousand dollars in county road funds and a hundred fifty thousand dollars in stormwater utility fees. And as discussed, uh, earlier this morning, staff will continue to, uh, put out public messaging to keep highlighting the very, uh, great achievements this project has been able to make. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Can you continue to put in for additional grants that we might be, that might become available to us?
I, I think that opportunity, I, I might have to revisit that with my, honestly, with my manager. I do know, for example, the, uh, two hundred ninety thousand dollar state Brian Abbott grant we had applied for two years ago. Um, they did come back and say there was extra, uh, dollars in that pot, so they were able to give that back. So we'll be able to look for those opportunities too.
When is the completion date, uh, scheduled to be?
Twenty twenty-five.
So between now and then, maybe, I mean, we can keep hoping, keep digging.
I would say we'll take every
You guys are doing a great job, I'd like to point out. Anytime we can save the local taxpayers', uh, funds for local projects and we can use state or federal dollars, it really helps. Thank you.
How many wheelbarrows are you gonna need to get the soil out of there? If you look at the human being, like, that's at the bottom of this left-hand picture, it's pretty amazing.
Absolutely.
That wall of soil, I mean, it's like, you look at it like, oh, and then you see how small that person is.
That must be, what, fifty feet?
Absolutely. That's fifty feet. And when you calculate it using a ten-yard dump truck, that's nine miles back to back of trucks, just for the dirt.
Wow. Right. Uh, any other questions for Marcus? Is there a motion?
I move to award the contract for the Green Cove Fish Barrier Removal Phase One Project, CP number six, three, zero, two, three, to Quig Brothers, Inc. of Aberdeen, Washington in the amount of six million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-six dollars and ten cents and to authorize the director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope for up to ten percent of the contract, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, sixty-one cents or an aggregate of seven million, five hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
Motion in second to award this contract to Quig Brothers, Inc. for the Green Cove Fish Barrier Removal Project. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
I, again, I would just like to thank the work that Public Works has really done for this project. Uh, when this was presented, uh, years ago, it just, the fact that you've been able to win two federal grants, gotten federal partners to really buy into this project has been a very big deal. And, uh, managing all of the stakeholder, uh, expectations too. I remember when the initial surveys were going out, it was tribal outreach, it was the different HOAs, it was, uh, just different community partners. It was the PUD, it was Medic One, it was the Sheriff's Office. And it was trying to find a solution, um, that was going to work for everyone. And kind of seeing that we're at this phase one part, it's, it, it's very exciting. So just kudos to Public Works and the amazing work that you have done to get to this point.
Thank you to the community members too, because they engaged on this respectfully and productively and they kept going with, you know, tracking what we're doing and, um, providing input. So I think that's been a useful part of the process. And sure.
Uh, you might have mentioned this, but again, how many miles of fish, uh, habitat are we generating by doing this?
This one would, uh, do two-thirds of a mile, point six, seven miles.
Okay.
Every little bit helps.
And we have projects for the next two culvert removals.
Exactly. Exactly. If the phase two is um for the same creek, Green Cove Creek, um Thirty-Six Avenue and Kaiser Road upstream.
Okay, very good. With that, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh last item is Commissioner Reports. Uh we have had a three-week board recess. Doesn't mean that the commissioners were in recess. You know, Commissioner Mejia in particular was very busy, so I'm gonna start with her this afternoon.
I um, I was like, I need to go back to my notes to see what I recorded on yesterday. Um. But, um, one second. I deleted it. Deleted all my notes from yesterday.
I wrote it all down.
Yeah, I did. I, I wrote it all down, and then now I can't find it. Uh give me one second, can you?
Yeah, I'll go with Commissioner Claus.
Okay, um so first, I will report on my external boards and commissions. Um I attended the ORCA meeting on the tenth. We discussed the burn ban which went into effect in Thurston County this last Saturday, the thirteenth, and applies to residential yard waste and land clearing burns. Um members of the public can find information about this burn ban on the Thurston County website under the Board of County Commissioners page. I also attended the Joint Animal Services Meeting on the eighth, where we discussed moving forward with the next phase of the new facility and discussed concept development. There was also a Regional Housing Council meeting which Commissioner Mejia attended for me as the alternate. And um that, that's all for my external boards. I also attended the Thurston County Chamber one hundred and fiftieth year anniversary celebration. Um participated in the Tumwater Independence Day Parade with Commissioner Mejia, and I had several conversations with stakeholders for the courthouse remodel conversation.
Okay. How was the parade?
It was awesome. I was really glad to participate. It was really fun.
It's a big one.
Yeah.
Usually the big one.
Yeah, I haven't attended that since I was really young, so participating in it was really, really nice.
Awesome. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess the, one of the bigger activities was uh the courthouse remodels, the time spent talking with folks and uh attending activities around that. Um and budget, which kind of ties in to the same, same frame of mind, I guess. Uh Lakes Management did take a tour with the county manager out at Lawrence Lake one afternoon to really bring staff up to exactly what we're faced with, that it's uh, it's been a long-term problem that uh that's been building for about a hundred years now, where there were sawmills on the lakes. Water was diverted out of the rivers into the lakes. So we've got a lot to do to fix that problem. Uh I really think as far as the fairground activity, uh we've got a new fair manager out there, and I think we can look forward to some uh great uh events that are generated. And I, and that is, uh that's not a slam on our old fair manager, but that position was only a ten-hour-a-week position. And now we've got a full-time fair manager out there, and I can tell she's on fire. We're gonna have a lot of good stuff. So I won't opine any more than that, but thank you very much, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh Commissioner Fornier?
Uh I had an opportunity to take county manager around some of South Thurston County and show him, show him some District Four. Uh we had an LTAC meeting, which I'm the chair of the LTAC committee, where we discussed a possible two percent increase in LTAC uh revenue or in LTAC uh yeah, revenue, a- as well as allowing private businesses to apply to the LTAC funds. I took a tour with uh Catherine from Environmental Health of the Black Lake Water uh testing sites, so went out and did some water testing with, with staff on the field, and that was really informative. And uh it's, it was interesting to learn about the work that we're doing there. Uh had a Shale's Basin Partnership Meeting where we talked about reclaimed water and a little bit about the Skookamchup Dam. Met with the folks from Public Health to talk about the fetal infant mortality work that's being done in the county. And uh um it's uh, it's important work. Uh I, I wouldn't, I don't wanna say I'm looking forward to learning more, but uh I definitely do intend to learn more about that and work with them. Uh we had the courthouse subcommittee meetings, we had multiple of those, and uh there, there will be report-outs forthcoming once that committee work is done. Attended two CDBG planning meetings with the South County mayors and staff regarding uh Lacy pulling out of the CDBG agreement. Had a tour of the fairgrounds with uh our director, Thomas Cena, the director, fair manager.
Manager.
Fair manager uh with Thomas Cena Cooper, and like Commissioner Edwards said, it's exciting to see some energy going into that or new energy going into that, and I am uh, I'm looking forward to see what the, what the fair turns into or evolves into or the possibilities that we could realize there. Attended the monthly mayor's meeting after the fairground meeting, and there was a lot of talk about what's going on in Tumwater. Um I had a tour of the Roosevelt landfill with Commissioner Mejia in Bickleton, Washington, uh where we got to learn a lot about uh what Republic Services does with the municipal waste that they haul from Thurston County, how it's processed. It's a twenty-five-hundred-acre landfill, and there are portions of it that are two hundred and fifty feet deep. It's fascinating. So uh, yeah, if you haven't done that, I know several other commissioners have. I, I definitely recommend it. And then I attended the Olympia Pride Parade.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Mejia?
Okay, uh I attended the Query Pool in Tenino, the grand opening. Uh I attended the WASC General Membership Meeting, attended the Regional Housing Council, uh the PAC Mountain Elected's uh Board. Uh I had been working in the BOCC Subcommittee Groups, and we had a couple of meetings of that. I was on the Fourth of July Parade. Uh I also did the Roosevelt Tour. Um I attended a meeting with Boston Harbor Community Members as well as the Park Foundation to talk about uh possibilities, uh and I attended the Chamber one hundred and fiftieth celebration. Uh TRPC as well as uh Fairgrounds Meeting with our new fair manager, Thomasina Cooper. I think uh we're all very excited about the things that can be done there. Attended the open house for the Golden Gavel Project, um and also attended the Deschutes Estuary Meeting yesterday as well as the July uh intercity transit uh Community Advisory Council Meeting. Um and also attended the twenty twenty-four Call to Budget Meeting yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Uh keep my reports short. I was mostly with family. Uh my wife's from Europe, and we, I try to use the break to see family and not have to miss any board meetings, which I didn't, so I was glad about that. Only caught a couple of meetings while I was gone. One related to the Sentencing Guideline Commission, on a subcommittee there, uh teeing up a brand-new sentencing grid that will go before the legislature uh next session, so we're working on some details of that. Attended the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary uh Funding and Governance Work Group Session yesterday with Commissioner Mejia and county staff. Um things are moving along there and moving quickly as we try to finalize the ILA before the fall. And leave it at that. We have two public hearings coming up at three thirty, so half-hour break. If you're interested in those items, they'll be up at three thirty. Otherwise, we're adjourned.
Okay, cool.